Residence B zoning district applicant Maria Machado, 700 Ian Ave, Isla Meadow Mass 01028.
Is somebody from the applicant here this evening?
Hearing none. We'll just have to, I guess, table it. So, all right.
Do we need to vote?
We don't continue or we just say table? I'll make a motion to table.
Motion made, seconded. Any more further discussion?
All those in favor, aye. Any opposed, any carries unanimously.
Case SPRW 2022-35, request for site plan review waiver for Autumn Lane Decor, a retail store at 44 Shaker Road, GIS 46, assessors parcel ID 27-168-0. In an existing structure located in Business Zoning District, applicant Lori Beston and Judith Cusano, 44 Shaker Road, Isla Meadow Mass 01028.
Is somebody from the applicant here this evening for that?
Motion to table.
Motion's made to table, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries unanimously. Next item.
Case SPRW 2022-36, request for site plan review waiver for VIP Double Blades, a home office at 389 Helm Street, assessors parcel ID 34-28-0, located in the residence A zoning district, applicant Alfredo Gonzalez, 389 Helm Street, Isla Meadow Mass 01028.
Is somebody? Good evening. Just kind of give us a brief description of the business, kind of the hours of operation, if there's any commercial vehicles. So just a kind of quick rundown of the business.
No, yes. This is not going to be on the actual address. This is my plan to build myself up. I've been doing this for 20 years. I always did it part-time. And, you know, it's been a little bit, I feel, I feel like everything happened. So I just want to have everything set up. I think for the certification, when I'm going to be able to open a business account and, you know, get my insurance, start walking, you know. So hopefully, you know, for the next year, I'll have my place. But I decided to do it door by door, you know, house to house.
Okay.
I'm seeing it as an option for myself, you know.
And what will you be, so what will you be selling exactly during?
No, I'm a barber.
A barber. Oh, okay. I see. So you'll be going to people's houses?
Yes.
Okay.
Appointment only.
Appointment only. Okay. So none of the people will be coming to your home? You'll just be doing the office work?
Yes, they do some office, you know, for that.
Okay. Does anybody have any?
I do. So you were in here a couple of months ago? For the auto?
Yes.
So what's going on with that?
With the auto? So I don't got to get running.
Okay.
Like I said, it was a jumpstart. Now I'm in the process with the website and everything.
Okay.
And getting everything set up.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Start smoking. Yes.
Yeah, thanks.
Hold on.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion's been made.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, any abstentions? That carries unanimously four to zero.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Definitely.
Just as a quick aside, so I just came back from Scotland. They have mobile barber shops. A truck would go and park in the town square and people would go to the truck and have their hair done.
People doing it multiple, multiple people at once?
No, usually it was one at a time. They'd go into the truck, have their hair done. Someone else would go in. It was really cool to watch.
Maybe they should bring that over here.
Yeah. Well, it might be.
I thought about it, but it has to be pricey, you know. You've got to run around, you know, face some haircuts.
Exactly.
But yeah.
Have a great year. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Case SPRW 2022-37, request for a site plan review waiver for Costas 3D Imaging Inc., DBA Jelly on My Belly, for a change in location from 312 North Main Street to 604 North Main Street, Suite 2, assessors parcel ID 1A-94-321, in an existing structure located in the Business Zoning District, applicant Tom Costas, 55 Benedict Terrace, Long Meadow Mass 01106.
Is somebody here for the applicant?
No, motion to table.
Should we check if maybe now that our Zoom is?
Is he got Zoom open?
I don't think he started it.
Okay. I think he's just recording.
A lot has happened in between.
Okay. So we will then, so if nobody here is representing the applicant or the applicant isn't here.
So a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, any abstentions? Next item.
Case SPRW 2022-38, request for a site plan review waiver for the conversion of a vacant retail store to Beauty Times Nail Salon at 200 Shaker Road, assessors parcel ID 18-18-6, in an existing structure located in the Business Zoning District, applicant Beauty Times, 40 Waterman Ave, Isla Meadow Mass 01028.
Good evening this evening. Good evening.
My wife is going to be thrilled because she is starting at 6:07.
Very, we're very quick. So yeah, just give us kind of a general description of, you know, what it is, hours of operation, kind of those type of details.
200 Shaker Road is the property address. My name's Brendan Greeley. I represent both the building owner and the applicant who is not drawn of Beauty Times. And so 200 Shaker Road was purchased a number of years ago. Became Taylor Rental. Taylor Rental renovated and occupied the building. They maintained a front area of retail. It's about 4,000 square feet. That is the area that we have identified to be the new home of Beauty Times. Very little modification, you know, obviously a lot of cosmetic. But in terms of retail, there's some designated office versus retail. You know, we're making one minor change in there that an office is going to be demolished. So that'll become part of the retail area. So increasing the retail area meant, I think, one or two more parking spaces in total. But there was plenty available when they calculated the number of parking spaces required back when it became Taylor Rental. So very minor in that sense, though it'll be, you know, definite, you know, different business in there.
So there, will there need to be an addition of parking spaces? Or the existing parking spaces still fit the formula?
The existing number of parking spaces is still.
The criteria even with that.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
What are the anticipated hours of operation?
So Monday through Saturday, 9 to 7, and Sundays, 10 to 5. I anticipate about 75 customers per day, but about 75% of their customers now are, you know, booked in an appointment. It's not as much walk-in.
Walk-in people. Okay. So a lot of those are appointment.
Everything is, you know, online scheduled. So don't anticipate an issue with traffic. You know, it'll be a nice reuse of, since the Taylor Rental closed, a nice reuse of the space. He'll have some signage that he'll, you know, come in and get approved. But we would anticipate the building looking very nice, you know, in, to support his, you know, the nature of his upscale salon.
Perfect. Does the board have any questions?
And this is the one that's across the town hall right now?
Correct. Yep.
Good use of the property.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion's been made. Do I hear?
Second.
Second. Motion's made, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye. All those opposed, no abstentions? That carries four to zero.
Great. Thank you.
Definitely.
Great. Thank you.
Here, guys.
I won't be here if the Magnum kick me out. Thank you.
All right, Bailey. Well, we will now on to the director's report.
Yeah. So I sent an email a couple of hours ago now. I'm planning on doing the director's reports written. So they're in your materials tonight. I'm planning on doing it with all of the other materials in the future. Just didn't get around to it this time. So with, I guess, most of my reports tonight is, I'm just going to start with the next meeting. We have one waiver and then two new site plan reviews and one continued, as you know, 337. And then, and under other business, I don't have anything other than the director's report. So we'll just keep that short. Couple announcements tonight. The town's working on implementing an online permitting system. It's with a company called OpenGov. I worked with it in my last job and had a lot of positive feedback. Our building commissioner, our new building commissioner also had, worked with it in South Hadley. And so we're actually able to take all of his permits from their town and bring it in for him to use and kind of train his staff on, which is another plus. And that's a kind of a segue to my next point. The things on the agenda tonight that I was proposing are bringing in potential amendments to site plan review and just a couple of related things based off of discussions with Dave. He was supposed to be here on Zoom tonight, but I don't see him. I don't think he's on, but. But he was going to just introduce himself. But.
Yeah, he's here. Oh, he is? Okay.
So I guess I just want to mention before we kind of get to Dave, the, most of the amendments are related to the online permitting and kind of just updating administrative processes and some of the things that other municipalities do would really align more with the town manager form of government. And so I did a lot of research on that. And the reason I'm not really bringing it tonight is because I didn't feel it was 100% ready. So I just want to get Dave's input on it and a little bit more. And then sit down with him and then I'll bring it to the December 6 meeting and we can talk about it then and then hopefully go through the whole public hearing process and actually do the amendments.
Sorry for the.
Davis here.
Half-baked meeting, Dave, but.
No problem. I don't know why. It's my, my video doesn't seem to be working. Or am I on or not?
I can hear you though.
Yeah. Okay. Well, cool. That's good. But I just don't know why I don't.
Go down to the lower left and click here beside the camera icon and select the right camera, maybe?
Uh, yeah. Pulling it off of a laptop. It's got a camera in. I'm not sure.
No, but see, we're down in the lower left. You put your cursor down to the bottom left of the screen.
Yep.
Then your toolbar will come up.
Yep.
And it says, like, it'll say start video or stop video or there's a video cap with an X through it.
Yeah, it's, it's on. It's.
If you put that carrot up, there's a little carrot to the right of it.
Oh, yeah. Okay, let's see.
And it gives you options.
Surface camera front. That's what I'm using.
Okay. All right.
Don't know what's up with that.
Okay. But I can hear you.
We'll just have to go into town hall meeting.
Yeah. We'll stop right in body. Yeah. At least we've got, we've got, yeah, audio live. So it's good to meet you over, over the audio.
Do you want to give a little bit of background, Dave, on where you come from and stuff to the board, just so they get a little bit of a sense of?
Yeah, the other problem I'm having is low volume. So what did you just say?
Yeah, you got it, you got it. So can you just give a little bit of a background on like your history? So the board has an idea of where you come from?
Sure. As, so I started out like a lot of building commissioners. Started out as a local inspector. There are a couple of levels of exams that have to be taken to get to commissioner level. So initially there are three exams that will allow you to work as a local inspector under the guidance of a commissioner. And anyway, so I started working Greenfield initially as a local and now also part-time in South Hadley. And then while doing that, took the time to study and take exams to get to certification for commissioner. I achieved that about four and a half years ago and started working in South Hadley full-time. Worked in Chicopee for two years as a local. So I've been in the area from Greenfield, Chicopee, North Hampton and South Hadley and now here. So. And it's been three weeks now here, so I'm feeling a little more relaxed than when I first started. And it's good to meet you all. I've, you know, kind of getting around to, you know, seeing some, some of the people who actually do the work. But anyway, well, I wish I could, I wish the video was working. I'm not sure why. I did test the camera before I even tried that, you know. It worked great. It's not working now, but. Anyway, I know Bailey said something about online permitting. So I do have a lot of experience in that. Chicopee has online systems, so I worked with that for about two years. And then South Hadley, we started using online in 2014. And then moved to the system that we will be using here in East Long Meadow. Hopefully by, I think today, I heard, you know, maybe the optimistic timeline was in January, early January, maybe something like that. So but way better, a lot better than doing paper permit applications and filing paper all day. So it's a good place to store all the information from all the different departments in one spot. So it's easily retrieved by other departments as we need it. And could not say enough good things about it, especially the system that is chosen, the OpenGov viewpoint permitting. So.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. So can you tell me what mayors you worked under in Greenfield and Chicopee?
Mayor in Greenfield? Who was that? That was a while back. That was, I'm not sure. I did work, I could tell you who I worked under in Chicopee. That was Richard Cos. Mayor in Greenfield? I'm sorry, I don't remember.
Do you recall who that was?
I never had direct contact with the mayor. My supervisor there was Mark Snow, who is still building commissioner there.
And do you consider yourself a proactive on zoning enforcement or reactive on zoning enforcement?
Ah, well, I would say it's a, it's a mix of both. I mean, you have to be proactive on the things that are painfully obvious. Certainly when issuing building permits, zoning comes in. You have to check zoning and everything for compatibility with the proposal before you can issue the permit. Reactive might be something like, well, every town has signs, right? Signs that are legal and ones that aren't. And every town has their own sign bylaws. So I'm not up on East Long Meadows yet. But how that usually works is, you know, you get a complaint. So signs are one of those things that can be complaint-driven in a way. Unless I get really proactive and as I was doing in South Hadley, I adopted the practice of doing a sweep every now and then, removing all the signs on the side of the road. And it was a mix, you know, I would get calls on that sometimes and other times when I had the time out on inspections, I would just do it. I sorted out initially calling people, phone numbers on the signs, right? There's a commercial sign, so they have contact information. I would call and say, you know, your sign's not legal. So if it's not gone by, you know, usually a couple of days later or a few days later, then, you know, I give them the opportunity to retrieve it because they do have some kind of value, right? So but that doesn't, that doesn't work. It's, yeah, you call them. It's, so I just. Zoning, other zoning issues that are complaint-driven, haven't had any issues here yet or any calls on fences. But, you know, fences are, well, they're supposed to make good neighbors, is what I heard. But, you know, sometime, a lot of times they don't, you know, then you get a call. I think East Long Meadows fence ordinance is pretty straightforward, pretty easy, makes sense. I've been in communities and I could say South Hadley has one where you have to hold a fence off three feet from a property line. And that was, it's not normally how people do it, you know? If you have a side property line, you put a fence up to divide you from the neighbor. And if you followed out ordinance, then three feet of your property is on the other side of the fence. You know, and it's just, that was a difficult one. But anyway.
Thank you.
Other zoning issues, I do get some calls. I've had a few calls since I've been in town about detached accessory structures, whether they're, if it's okay to be in the side yard, you know, how far from the side property line, so on and so forth. So. And again, if I'm out driving around and I see something that doesn't quite fit, I would need to know a few things before I was proactive on such a thing. I would need to know how long it's been there. It's been more than 10 years and the statute of limitations on enforcement has expired. So it takes some research. I guess the theory there is if it's been there for 10 years and there's been no enforcement effort, nobody complained, well, it must be okay. But.
So I would debate, I would debate you, I would debate you on that. There are just, I would debate you on that. In today's world, people don't want to complain about their neighbor because potentially the blowback against them will be extreme. That's why I asked you whether you would be proactive or reactive. I for one, I for one am looking for a proactive building inspector with respect to zoning infractions. So I think the fact that, I think the fact that no one is complaining.
The problem is that, and that's good to hear. But, you know, a lot of building inspectors have been chastised by their supervisors for being too proactive on such things. So, you know, it's kind of a balance. And I'm happy to work toward finding out what that balance is in East Long Meadow and working with the community to, you know, to make it right.
Through the chairman?
Sure.
What is your preferred method of receiving complaints? Do you like them in writing, in email, phone? What's your, this is George Kingston. What's your preference?
Well, in writing for sure, whether by email or in, you know, physically on paper, in the mail or anyway, it should be in writing. And I also prefer to know who it's from. For instance, I got a complaint about, and it's, it's a complaint, it's like a group complaint, actually. The letter indicates that several neighbors are upset about a particular behavior. And bylaws do say that when I get written complaints, then I need to follow up on those, but with the town administrator as well, to notify the town administrator, so on and so forth. But this letter came anonymous. There are, there's no, no contact information at all. I know the location and I can't discern if the behavior that they're complaining about is actually taking place or not. My powers of investigation or entering a property, in fact, I cannot enter a property uninvited. That would be illegal. It was, you know, I've gone by the place a few times. I can't discern outwardly from the street that the behavior that's being complained about is actually taking place. So I really would then rely on somebody who's making the complaint, first of all, to provide enough information, some kind of something to go on. And also a name. And the name's important because written complaints, you know, there are practices where people just don't like their neighbors, so they'll complain. And they don't want to take responsibility for any kind of, like, blowback. You show up at a property and you say, I got a complaint. One of the first things somebody will say is, from whom? And I would say, well, and it doesn't really make much difference, right? Because, I mean, it's either you're doing, this is a violation or there isn't. If it's a blatant violation, can be seen, then there's no reason to provide a name so somebody can retaliate, perhaps. So I do try to protect people who, you know, as much as possible. But the other way that that can go is I can show up and say, I received a complaint, and it will be absolutely nothing, except maybe, I don't know. And there was something fairly recently, well, not so recent, a complaint about one thing when they, really the goal was to attract attention to something else more nefarious taking place. So the complaint seemed pretty benign, really, just a simple zoning violation. But it was meant to draw attraction to criminal behavior. Well, that's, that's real, kind of a dangerous place to go, you know? So, you know, a name is really, is preferred, especially when I cannot see the violation from the street. If I can stand on the, on the corner, out at the street or something, and I can actually see what the violation is, well, then there it is. But if it's in somebody's backyard, I can't go there, you know? So it's, it's not an easy job, that part of it, you know, zoning enforcement. I don't have a weapon with me. I don't have, you know, protective gear. You know, people are pretty touchy these days. So I can't behave like a cop because I'm not and I shouldn't be expected to be.
Through the chair. Sure. Would you welcome assistance from other town employees identifying potential zoning infractions? So, you know, you work, let's say, an eight to four, but if you have police and fire and DPW on the streets around town at other times and they are educated on what are the most frequent zoning infractions and they let you know about them, do you think that would be beneficial?
Oh, sure. That's, that's pretty common behavior. It just happens, you know, automatically, really. And my former position in South Hadley, I had a good relationship with fire department. There are two of them there. So I would, if they went into a house to deal with an issue and they saw something that wasn't right, they would report it to me and then I would follow up on it. So didn't ask them to or anything. It's just, as I say, it's something that just sort of naturally occurs once you build a relationship with all of these folks. Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions?
No.
Well, David, it was great meeting you, even though it was over audio. So we look forward to meeting you in person at some point. But welcome aboard to East Long Meadow.
All right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a couple of other things on my report, um, just to kind of round off some stuff. The, uh, just to mention one more time, the December sixth meeting, I'm gonna have the amendments, um, prepared and discuss those and then we'll have a presentation on the master plan implementation and, uh, the status on that, which I'll also give at the town council meeting, um, the week after. And then, um, on the traffic impacts, uh, study for three thirty Chestnut, I just want to mention briefly, since it's not a part of the public hearing right now, um, that I have, uh, been in contact with a consultant and we, um, have a contract. It's not fully executed yet, but, um, I expect it to be by the end of this week. And the applicant has requested a continuance for the next meeting, um, due to the requested information at the last meeting and, um, a little bit of delay getting the consultant hired. So, um, just for, you know, for them to be able to review it and get a report back to the board and the board to review everything, so.
So can I ask a procedural question?
Yeah.
So, um, are we allowed to vote to, to continue that now? So that people would have noticed that it's continued?
I don't think so because it's not, we continued it to the November fifteenth then.
Okay, all right.
It's a date cert, so, um, yeah, I just bring it to your attention tonight. I do plan on, and I believe the applicant plans on putting some sort of notice that they have requested it.
Great.
And I believe, I mean, the Fields of Chestnut has been notified already.
Great, thanks.
So, um, at least the main opposition is aware.
Can, can you make a note of that on the agenda? Fifteenth.
Note of what?
That they're asking for a continuance.
I could, I was planning on just putting it on the website as well separately, just as like a announcement. That way it's. But, um, but yeah, I, I can put that up. And then lastly, uh, kind of related as well, um, I've started putting the, uh, public hearing materials that is sent out, all the materials that are sent out to the board for each case on the website in a pretty prominent place. Um, that way we can, instead of emailing people individually, we can just point them to the website every time. So it's pretty, uh, pretty great. It's gonna be linked, um, in the minutes tonight, so if anyone catches us, you can go there and find the direct link. And, uh, just a note, we will keep it on, any case on there until after the appeal period. So once the appeal period is up, you won't find it online anymore, but can still be requested through our office. That's everything I have, so. And then just the review of, I guess, the last thing on the agenda is the review of the schedule. I don't know if anyone wants to have any discussion on particular meeting dates that anyone has any planned trips, but, um, you know, it's kind of far in the future, but just, it's, uh, it's there for the board now. And, um, I'm publishing it on the website sometime this week, so we have, uh, those dates available since it's coming up on the end of the year.
Yeah, I don't anticipate any issues. I mean, I may have a trip, uh, in the works for the middle of January or sometime in January, so, um, but at this point, nothing jumps out as problematic. Seems like a pretty standard meeting.
I've got a trip planned sometime in April, but, yeah.
Yeah, we can obviously have those discussions as we get closer, but.
Exactly, but it looks pretty standard to me. Do we need to, um, do we need to approve this?
I don't think so.
Okay. It'll just be.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. I know that our last matter, um, in executive session is on the agenda here.
Yeah, it should be quick. Just need to clarify a couple of things on that.
Okay.
So just before we do, so, um, I think I put in a request that we put a, have a discussion before the end of the year about what I refer to as quality of life, um, concerns in the zoning ordinance. Unregistered vehicles was the one I, I specifically pointed out, but I'd like to have a nice frank discussion on whether we would consider making changes on things like, you know, the number of unregistered vehicles that are allowed on the property, whether we should be screening RVs, whether we should be screening boats. One of the reasons I was so vocal is, uh, there are whole streets in this town that have just, are, they, they look like trailer parks or they look like boat storage things. If you lose one street, you lose a neighborhood. And enforcement is very important, but also some of these have been in place for a very long time and maybe it's a time to have a real solid look at, you know, some of these things. So, uh, just a discussion I want to have is, is there interest from the planning board in even considering that?
Yeah.
And then.
So.
Maybe there would be a good time before either one of the next couple of meetings.
I don't know if we could by the end of the year because there's so much going on. But I think, um, my first, I guess, the review of what I'm talking about, um, at the next meeting, or at the sixth meeting will be, um, hopefully the start of like a review of bylaws. And we also have to really, uh, need to go through the subdivision rules and regs in detail. So I definitely am putting together a plan to start to look at those things. So I just noted that specifically down and, um, we'll, we'll get something put together. If it's not by the end of this year, it'll be early next year. I can promise you that at least, but it, I just don't want to pack, I don't want to pack the agendas, I mean.
Yeah, I'm just really more interested in.
We can, I mean.
Is there, is there an appetite?
Yeah.
To actually get more.
I mean, I prefer that too, because then we can.
Focus on things that we.
My, my efforts on things, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I think in a, in a general sense, it's a really good idea to take a, you know, look at bylaws and see, you know, the ones that you're looking at, potentially looking at and, um, uh, considering. And then this, this as well, I think would, it would be a healthy discussion to have, just to see where, you know, things change every couple of years. You know, new technology comes or new kind of trends come, so, you know, in the community.
I agree.
All right, so, uh, do I?
I think George is, George is the most knowledgeable on getting into executive session and out of it.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session and not come back into the open meeting. In, first one to MGL, chapter thirty, uh, paragraph twenty-one, A three, to discuss potential resolutions and certain litigation pending against town. That's a motion.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded.
We have to go to roll call.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, yes.
What, so? Yeah, George Kingston, yes.
All right. That passes four to zero.